I'm going to bring the Grand Kennedy School District Board of Education work session to order. It's Wednesday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty five. And it's three thirty five. We are here at the district office and available via Zoom. Um. I'd like to be just. Very. Please. Uh Jill, we need to pledge allegiance?
Yes. I. I'm not an American. And should the Republic or which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um Kathy, please do the read the mission.
Our mission is to put each student first every day.
Uh from the list of the agenda.
I move your approval agenda is present.
A second. Hey, Richard, make some motion. Don't it work thirty seconds? All those. Uh. All those in favor of approving the agenda as present. Say hi.
Hi.
Hi. That passes five zero. Did you say it right?
Hi.
Okay. Back it in. Uh, that is public comment. Any public comments? A next uh personnel list. Um, that is the October personal list that we will be approving next week. Do you have any questions about specific people? Please.
What we're approved.
Next week. If you have any questions about specific people, please. Um up to now. Uh, are we fully staffed in lunch then with with?
We are currently fully staffed in.
We are. Okay. Any questions about these positions we're hiring? What does ESP stand for?
Yeah, educational support profession. That's your new terminology for a classified profession.
Is the debate coach a teacher? Or just a community member?
Community member.
I'm going to bring the Grand Kennedy School District Board of Education work session to order. It's Wednesday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty five. And it's three thirty five. We are here at the district office and available via Zoom. Um. I'd like to be just. Very. Mary. Uh Jill, we need to pledge allegiance?
Yes. I. I'm not an American. And should the Republic or which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That was. Um Kathy, please do the read the mission.
Our mission is to put each student first every day.
Uh, from the list of the agenda.
I move your approval agenda is present.
A second. Hey, Richard, make some motion. Don't it work thirty seconds? All those. Uh. All those in favor of approving the agenda as present. Say hi.
Hi.
Hi. That passes five zero. Did you say it right?
Hi.
Okay. Back it in. Uh, that is public comment. Any public comments? A next uh personnel list. Um, that is the October personal list that we will be approving next week. Do you have any questions about specific people? Please.
What we're approving.
Next week. If you have any questions about specific people, please. Um up to now. Uh, are we fully staffed in lunch then with with?
We are currently fully staffed in.
We are. Okay. Any questions about these positions we're hiring? What does ESP stand for?
Yeah, educational support profession. That's your new terminology for a classified profession.
Is the debate coach a teacher? Or just a community member?
Community member.
All right, moving on. HMK pre- K site updates.
Not a lot to update on uh the HMK project. We're still um sticking to our substantial completion date of football league night around Thanksgiving, moving in. Um to the new uh preschool at the start of the next uh calendar year. Um, you've got two major pieces of the synthetic turf has now been put down. The synthetic turf in the. Uh, new preschool playground is is in shade structure poles. We're waiting on the fabric further shade structures that should be coming in. Um, and outside of that, yeah, not a lot to update. Kind of still where we. On your app.
Are we gonna be um doing the Halloween parade? It's gonna be open for the Halloween parade?
Yeah, that's a question I don't have an answer to. I was not privy to one Halloween parade, so.
Three things inside this year. Okay.
I'll have to visit with Holly and staff down there.
But we might also be able to do it on the four six playground because they also have the walk for Halloween.
Okay.
So there is a possibility of that.
Okay. Let's put that on our radar. It's important. The community, like, there's a lot of people that show up. Parents and.
Yeah, this is gonna be good. Good. It's good to be aware.
Yeah. Um. Any other questions? All right. Um, as our presentation, we're gonna take a little. About the. Followed to it. Something else. Not available. But we'll leave some here.
She she got a text message for her. She's on her way.
Okay. And we'll move on then to the policies.
So the policies that we've we've posted for the work session are for your for your review. Um, they'll they'll be coming back on next week's regular board meeting, hopefully with a recommendation to to post what we need to post for public comment. So these are just there for you guys to review. Um, nothing, new policies, nothing uh. Super controversial, uh, just kind of kind of run-of-the-mill. New policies. I don't know if you have any, if you had a chance to read them yet. I know some of you have questions. Um, anything that you would like us to look into further. For they have prepared for you next week.
I have a couple of questions. Um. And the first, the drug testing, is that um? What's sort of the, like, if there's a reasonable suspicion? From another employee, I mean, like.
So.
And then that reports to the district.
So reasonable suspicion is been a. A gray area for for a very long time as to what that means. Um. This policy outlines or describes some of that process. It's still gonna come down to the discernment of of the administrator when that happens. Currently, for example, when that when that happens, we've got a couple instances. Um, a phone call has been made. I've been contacted by administrators and we talk about. You know, what is reasonable suspicion and what is the right action to take and what indications are we seeing? Um, obviously. Wanting to put safety first, but also understanding people's right to privacy and their individual rights as well. Uh, so I'm not sure what. The driving factor behind this uh strengthening this is for for a long time, public education had a kind of a. Bad reputation for being a place where somebody could go and get away with that because they never tested. They never. You know, it's a a giant employment pool that was never, like, subjected to random testing and whatnot. Um, and I don't think it ever will be subjected to random testing, but this definitely um gives some legs to reasonable suspicion suspicion and how to act. Going forward. It it is interesting to me, if you followed the the trend at all, um. It it used to be that if somebody, I remember a a good teacher getting injured. District on the Wausatch Front, um, and tested positive at workers' comp for um marijuana THC. And ended up losing their job over it. It was very controversial whether or not they should have. So this, to me, doesn't make it any clearer in those situations, saying that, you know. We're have reasonable suspicion, we should be testing and what the consequences are of that. And recently, if you follow the U-PAC findings on that specific thing. A lot of times, um. Unless there's extenuating circumstances, it's been as as low as a letter of. Um, it's not attached to their Cactus file for for failing a drug test like that. If it's not, like, not at work, not. Type of deal. So it's interesting. Um, that's why it's there for us to to look at and and debate, kind of see. Where we where we want to go. It doesn't really change. It doesn't change anything for you in um. Uh. Safety sensitive and critical positions.
Can I keep going with that one question?
Yeah.
So, um. So, um. It. It does have to deal with. Our penalty. For teachers is with Cactus versus a parent or somebody else that is. Should say classified. They're.
The punitive action would go through U-PAC on on a license.
Teachers.
Uh, and then for the for the district, we would have the discretion on on a non.
Okay.
Licensed individual.
But they potentially could Cactus or U-PAC could take away their license.
If that. For a certified position, absolutely.
Yeah.
So a a non, so an employee that is not a safety sensitive position. So bus drivers obviously are, but what else would be a safety sensitive?
They have their own policy though.
Bus driver. So this is for employees who are neither bus drivers nor employees in a safety sense position. So what would a safety sensitive?
I don't know that we have that. Uh formally defined in our required job descriptions. Um, it would, you know, for example, we had. Uh, our own police force, like some districts do, that that would be included um in in that realm. I don't know what's in how. I mean, outside of transportation, somebody transporting students. Anything formal.
So, um, a couple of years ago, walk along a little while that was, um. We talked about kind of that safety sensitive position and we were having um kind of problems finding people. To drive Suburbans or something. I don't know. But um we had put them in the testing pool. For um if they were driving students.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know that still?
We still have people transporting students or the testing.
Okay.
Is that random testing?
It is.
Okay, so like coaches and and any ball of like, okay. And that we changed the policy, but since then we probably adopted these new.
Oh, that was that was pre-made, so I will go back and research.
Hmm. I mean, um. I don't know if I said, um. On the firearm safety, what is to a grade?
Say that again.
Uh, it's a EC though. Uh, just says.
To a grade. That's just a strange. I mean, I assume it just means.
My interpretation of that is that we're teaching that to one grade level. So. Between.
What thing? Oh, so we would set.
We would say we are. We are going to be teaching that to.
Second graders.
Second graders, fourth graders, uh, seventh graders, how, and then as as that goes down.
Okay. Every grade gets three times a year, or we pick the grade to do three times.
They get it three times while they're in elementary.
Every grade.
Every student.
Every student.
Would have it three times over their life of elementary, once in middle school and once in high.
Oh, in their life.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Not a year. Not a grade.
So three times over their over their elementary experience.
Okay. And not, okay.
And then, um, I did go to the Utah Code, um, regarding individual rights instruction, let the from weapon laws, is this. So does that mean? I mean, who's gonna teach this to regular teachers and then someone who's coming in and handled a weapon if need be? That's what I'm thinking.
We have not gone down the road of of deciding, and there are some options that you have to teach that, whether you're using um video resources, in-person resources.
Yeah.
Things of that nature. We we have not flushed that part of it out. This is just.
But at least officer of any jurisdiction will be the school resource officer.
Yes.
But there potentially could just be a film, a video, right?
Right.
That we could just. And this has to be started this year?
Yes.
And who's gonna determine which grades?
Yeah.
And 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 what's the curriculum and is it gonna turn you around?
Be working with the administrators to make that selection.
And then is that going to be put into?
Uh, I I that would be more of a procedure, not a not necessarily.
And and we have a proceed, and then is there a procedure handbook of some sort?
In 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 theory, there's a procedure and process handbook, but we would we would establish that practice.
Okay.
And and make sure that we're in compliance going forward.
So the administrators are gonna be in charge of it. If it's not happening, it's not on the health teacher, it's not on.
We'll make sure that.
At this point, it's on the administrator.
I have a question. Focused graduation pathway?
Yeah.
Do you think that, like, I'm assuming something like our SCSC would probably fit into this? Um, because we part of something similar.
If we have something similar.
Something similar.
Just seeing seeing how it lines up with the, again, model policy.
Right.
That we can tweak to our system or our system can tweak to meet it to meet the requirements.
I wonder if. Having it. Um. Like, are are kids that if they want to go back for a GED, they do that through adult ed? Could that, could could that be incorporated into this, do you think? Or do you think it would have to be within?
I I don't.
ESD.
I don't know specifically. Doesn't really need to locate him.
I mean, that's where kids do the GED, right? That we don't, or do we do that at SCSC sometimes?
GED testing?
GED at SCSC?
No, no.
Oh, all adult.
Adult.
It's all in adult ed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had a question on the food additives.
Nothing yellow, red or blue.
No, well, it says the prohibition against certain food avenues and blah, blah, blah. It does not apply to school district with fifty-five hundred or fewer, so.
So we don't necessarily have to even dig into that. It's just there because it's a suggested new model model policy.
Do we want to, are we, do you believe or using those additives?
I I we talked a little bit about this from a finance point of view in the the finance meeting earlier, and I think it really depends on. What, how big a lift that becomes. If we have our major suppliers that are nationwide, statewide suppliers. Modifying their goods to meet this, then it's no problem to implement. I don't see why we wouldn't if we believe it's in the best interest.
Yeah.
Or or we could, you know, completely ignore it because we are exempt. Um, I'm not certain how that shakes out. So maybe the thing to do is. To see how that market and those products shape us over the next several months and then bring it back, pass it at another time. If that's something the board wants to do. Uh, it really depends to, in in my opinion, on on what. What changes in the market, what what, if any, changes that drives in the market. I don't know the products to the extent where I could tell you.
I mean, this could be seven rings and a cape for a birthday.
Um, I think that's. Exent, right?
No, they don't. They would have to get, the teacher would have to get permission from the students, parents at the very.
Um, students, they provide students with such food during the school. Well, as a teacher, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, if a stu, if a teacher provided it. They'd have to get permission.
I was thinking that.
They just eat it off.
A whole bunch. That's what I was thinking that, you know?
Yeah, but but down here, the teacher makes a lot of things like.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, right.
Yeah.
You touched that.
It's the it's the shortest of all the policies that we're looking at. So. If you continue to go through and you have questions or want something addressed for next week's meeting, just let us know. And like I said, we we can take, we can post what you want the board. Wants posted and and leave the rest. Um. This is just a jumping off place for the wonderful policy pathway we're headed down.
With the with the flag. Um, this this will, this would help. I think we've had people come in before, um, with the. Um, what flags were doing before football games. And so this is really narrowing it down to not a blue lights, like, that was one of the blue lights under is not part of that list.
That that narrows that list down.
Okay, and so it's.
Very, very much.
Yeah. Per Utah Code.
Are you following Utah Code?
Yeah.
The interesting piece in that to me is that it's regulating actual flags, not images of flags.
Yes, they could put something on their, like, their jersey, there's a.
Patch or a sticker or whatever.
They could be, yeah, like the colors or whatever, like the blue and black or.
Yeah.
Bright or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
The actual flag, but you could put a sticker of a. Right flag, if you want.
Yeah, like I've seen the um the multi, like, the rainbow colored Legos in a row standing, sticker.
Yeah.
You know.
At least you could even have a flag sticker.
Even a flag sticker.
That's very solid. Very specific about what a flag and flag.
Yeah, there you go.
It's a fabric. It's inter- interesting piece.
Fabric. It's a fabric.
It's an interesting piece of policy. An interesting piece of legislation.
Mm-hmm. Any other um? Questions? Momental needs?
Couldn't. Get back, I just. Look, I just be interested, um. Maybe. Hearing from, I don't know, some of the cons, concerns of the schools reverting.
I mean.
I think they already.
Yeah, they have already implemented that. And in code. I mean, we're not doing that. I mean, we can, we can probably talk about their frustrations with it, but.
Okay.
It's gonna be code or law. I mean, these are policies that we're not really treating.
Right.
Um, to govern our district specifically or this, these are all code.
Yeah.
Like. If we were going to add something, um. Now, can we have a report? Can we have a report after, like, hey, is this affecting? Um, how do you?
Yeah.
But I don't know what we could do about it unless we could lobby, we could hear about it, we could then lobby to. This legislature and try to get things changed. Um. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
So like later on?
Hmm. Um. Yeah, I don't think before. Okay.
But they've already got this. Right to me.
Yeah. But we could. Yeah, specifically. Um, I'm trying to think of just a, like, something, how they could present, you know, what that would look like or. Um. Without just, you know, it's more of a presentation of how. How they're frustrated with it, but.
Or how it's affected their numbers, maybe, like, if they are to, and if the numbers have gone down.
Yeah.
Lot.
Um, so I'll add that.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, sure. There's lots of other districts that.
Well, we're one of, I think. We have therapists, which a lot of districts don't necessarily have. They have counselors, but um therapists are. Um. So we're a little different.
We should have.
Yeah.
Do you think you're seeing more and more districts go that way? I think Grant was out in front on that. How does your shape, your changing of the district go that way? So that's.
And that might be why they're legis, like, why they're passing legislation, because if more schools are, they're just, yeah, trying to. Okay, FDA CG. Any other questions on? Those policies?
I mean, the school meal payments seems like that's what we're already doing.
I think that's in response to some districts that have not. Followed guidance, uh, maybe gone against the spirit of of legislation and role to still have. Uh. In my opinion, distasteful practices. So this is just reminding everybody, hey, we're not joking around. Um, so, again, I don't think it changes anything we're doing.
Is, with those districts where um I, if they were in the negative, they would give them different. Um, sandwiches. Is that, that would be publicly.
That would be.
Identifying, right?
And that's that's probably the main thing is that, you know, you're, hey, no, get in line and get a peanut butter sandwich type of situation, so.
You know. Any other questions? Hey, so it's will be on uh next board meeting to uh. The ability to post.
Now, I have a question. Will these be, they're they're effective right now, correct? Or is this supposed to go in later, like, January to be effective?
No, they they'll be effective as soon as the board.
Okay.
Uh, takes action to to formally uh pass those.
Okay.
Um. We are, yeah, we're we're behind on on the policy process. I think we've been behind on the policy process since I started. But Neshay and I are making huge waves and we're gonna get this caught up. Right, Neshay?
But for example, FDA, the one we were just talking about, the health, the therapists are already implementing this. Rule, because even though we haven't passed it yet.
We're still doing.
Do they?
They know.
Because they have, are they doing it because they know that they have to, regardless of whether we pass it, right?
Correct.
I mean, we we have very little leeway since.
On most of these, yes, very little leeway.
Yeah.
Uh, you have the discretion because of the size on the the food additives.
Well, it says on the thing that, just beginning with the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, so.
Okay. Um, right, Holly. Hi.
Hi.
Uh. Observer tab presentation. Do you want to do that first or do you want to do your?
Okay. So before she gets started, just a just a reminder, we elected to go with observer tab and she's gonna go over the details in in her presentation. Uh, but just from. From a thirty thousand foot perspective, it gives us continuity and consistency in a format that is. In line with the Utah Effective Teaching Standards. It it really takes a lot of the ambiguity out of it, and then she's gonna talk about. The benefits to both administrators and teachers alike, but this is something that we've gone down and I I talked to the board before about it. One of the great selling points for Observer Tab. Is their relationship with the State Office of Education and how when things change at the state office, they quickly change at Observer Tab. So. With that, Holly, take it away.
All right. Does anybody know kind of what the observer tab? Is they doing here?
Yeah.
Okay, I go my first one.
I go my first one. So firstly, just what is it, an answer to this question? So. For us, it's kind of a district alignment tool for, um, teacher evaluations. Which is really nice so that we don't have pockets of different things happening, right? We have consistency across the district. Um, and as Matt already mentioned, it's designed. For a couple of different things. So it's designed for the evaluation cycles. So we have as embedded in part of that is the observations. So. In observer tab, we can do the observations in there, we can do the goal setting, we can do the self-assessments, all the pieces that are actually asked of. Um, administrators to oversee for teachers is all embedded in observer tab, which is really nice. So kind of the, um, purpose and vision behind it, then, or why it's better to have this than something else. Um, is the idea that it provides that consistent instructional feedback. It really streamlines the evaluation process. Which is really good for administrators, um, because then we, we know that we're kind of all on the same page and the expectation is the same across the board. Um, the other thing it does too is it allows for that, uh, professional growth in the reflective teaching practice. When you can go in and do those observations, you can send that information, that direct feedback to teachers. Um, and then they can get that in an email and go through that on their own, and then it gives you an opportunity to go back and cycle back with them and meet with them again. So, um, I really love that reflectivity. Um, and then of course, it, it streamlines the data collection too, and so go to the next one for me. It's actually a couple, a couple more, I'll show you some examples. But what it does is it gives us that real time data that we need. Um, on instruction and whether or not that instruction is effective. Um, so using the tools that are already embedded in observer tab, and one of the, one of the routes we've gone. Is we've kind of customized it. That's what's great about observer tab too, is you can customize how you want those observations to look. Um, the forms and stuff, so we've been able to do that. And where Matt said. No matter what happens with our teaching standards, because we, I've seen them changed even in my career. Even if they change, observer tab will change with it. And so we'll always have the current teaching standards. Um, that we can then customize. The other thing that's really nice is we've been able to align it with Marzano. With our high reliability schools, and so we've got some of that customized in there as well. Um, okay, go to the next one. Um, benefits for administrators. Uh, first of all, it's transparency. Right? Because we know that everyone's gonna have the same expectation, um, and go through the same type of cycle. The other thing is the timely feedback loop. Um, I think that's really important. Because then again, I can, at the click of a button, I can send them the feedback and observation that I just did. Um, and so not having to wait for me to go and write it up or whatever, it's just right there. Um.
You're observing the class and then taking notes as you do.
Yeah, I would just take notes on it right down with the computer and, and send it off, yeah. Um, and then of course, being able to connect it directly to their growth goals. So I'll show you some examples of what that looks like in just a moment, but being able to pull up their goals and their. Self-assessments at the same time in the same program while I'm doing an observation is also really helpful. And of course, reducing paperwork is always nice, save the trees, right?
And then that feedback to the teacher is coming from observer tab or you?
It's coming from me. Yeah, using one of their tools, and I'll show you what those tools.
But then, but like, you wouldn't send an email, you'd send it.
It would come through observer, the form is in observer tab, I would fill out, and then it would go to their, to their email. So some of the tools, here's an example of all the different tools that we have available. So there's a variety of self-assessments and growth plans based on whatever their licensure is. So there's one for our educators, there's one for counselors. There's one for our instructional coaches, even our, um, our S L Ps have, have their own. Um, self-assessment and growth plans, so it's really directed towards whatever their, uh, certification is, which is really nice. Looking under the observation and evaluations, um, a lot of those are customized, like I said, to exactly what we want. So the classroom coach through was built. Um, at the district level, um, with insight from the administrators on what that should look like. So it's really customized to what we want to see. And then some of the other ones on the side are just built in tools that observer tab has to offer. So if I have a teacher who comes to me and says, I'm having problems with this student. Who's off task all the time, I can jump into that time on task diagnostic one, go in and use that form. And collect data for them and send it to them instantly, which is super nice.
So I have a question, and I know you're still going, but since this is pulled up, when you were mentioning in the earlier slide about data. You were specifically talking about student performance data?
Not necessarily, just, just data in the form of growth goals.
For just the teacher.
Okay, go ahead and go to the next one for me. Um, so as I mentioned, it's, no, you're good. It is tailored. For our school district and it's directly aligned with the two Utah effective teaching standards. Around the requirement at the state legislative level of the professional growth plan. So. What, what's nice again, as I mentioned, is when the teachers go in to do their self-assessment or their professional growth plan, they can select the one that is applicable to them. Alright, next one. I'm gonna show you some examples of why it's also really good for administrators, is it keeps track for me when they actually submitted that. And then it also keeps track of, uh, yeah, so when they submitted, this is an example of when it was submitted, their self-assessment.
Yeah.
And then it also keeps track of when I, um, submitted back to that, right? So then I'm not having to continually think, when was that, or keep track of it in a different way, it keeps track of it on the platform, which is really nice. Okay, next one. And as I mentioned, the biggest selling point for me as administrator is the idea that it's tied directly to the Utah effective teaching standards. So when a teacher goes in to do the self-assessment, it brings up all of the standards and all of the elements within the standard, and those teachers can rate themselves, whether they're. They rate themselves as a teacher leader, confident, focusing or growing. They've changed the terminology, um, around a little bit. From what it previously was, and they can kind of rate themselves on how they, how they see themselves in each of those standards, which is really nice. Okay, next one. And then the same thing for the professional growth plan, as they go through their professional growth plan. Um, it breaks it down so that we have, if they're on the summative cycle, or it's like the bigger, longer cycle. We have three checkpoints that we do with teachers during that cycle, and so it has the availability for part one, part two, and part three, which is really nice. Um, but it also allows for a formative cycle, um, too, so that where we only need the, the part one and part three, so that's really good. Okay, next. And then actually skip that one and go to the next one, go to twelve. There you go. So when they go in and set goals, this is kind of what it looks like. They have two sets of goals that they'll, they'll enter, one for student learning and one for professional growth. Um, so they'll set their goal, whatever that is for student learning, and then they have to identify the action steps and also the measurement of success. Which I really like, it ties really nicely with our ideas of, um, success criteria, so. Okay, for the next one. So that'd be the student learning goal, and then the second goal they have to do is a professional goal. Oh, here's an example of what that would look like when it's all finished. Just so you can kind of see an example of what it would look like. H M K, I pulled up an example. Of, of one, because I asked my teachers to all use our wig as our student learning goal. For this year, so that we can all focus on the same thing, and then they all identified their own action steps and their own measurement of what that would be. For, for them to help us attain that goal as a school. Next.
Is that eighty five or sixty?
Sixty five. Yeah. Um, and then for the professional growth goal, they have to select the standard, the teaching standard that they want to focus on. And then as soon as they select the standard, go to the next one, then they have to select an element. Um, and then within, uh, within the standard of what they wanna focus on, so that it's directly tied to those teaching standards, whatever professional growth goal that they've chosen to do. We'll have the next one for me. And so when they get in there, they'll fill out, again, the same thing, the action steps and the measurement for success, but it'll be based around the teaching standard that they've selected.
Is there a back and forth in, in this section, like where?
Nope, it's all on one.
I mean, well, let me, so if you, if they say a growth goal, and you're like. That's not there, that's not measurable or something, is there a back, is there?
Yes.
That, so.
With that, like I was saying, that's why we meet, we meet with teachers at the beginning of the year, that's what I'm doing right now, is meeting the teachers. To go through these two documents with them, um, to identify whether those are accurate goals or they're really attainable, right? Can we get some of those from them? So yes, there is conversations. Okay, next one. Um, looking at it from the, the perspective on the other side, once they fill it out. Then it kind of looks like this, so they have their goal, they have their action steps, and they have their measurement for success. And it's tied directly, you can see where like this one says standard five, um, and then five point three is the element, and then what they've been for that. Okay, next one. Um, what's also really nice about it. Yes, hold on, there you go, is that it, it has built in the timelines for us, so like, part two for our summative cycles. Has to be completed by December nineteenth, and it kind of gives us an idea of what are the things that we need to have done and completed. And then same thing for what has to be done by April thirtieth, the steps that need to be taken in order to fulfill either the formative or the summative cycle for teachers. So it's nice that it's already built into the system for us. Okay, last, second to last one. And then benefits for teachers, um, being a teacher on the other side of this, because we had observed time when I was still teaching, which was about a few years ago. Um, it really does streamline that feedback. It was really nice to be able to just get a quick email from my administrator. Um, that was timely, right? Um, as to what it was that they saw in my classroom. Um, it allows for that transparency as well, as to what the evaluation actually entailed and what they saw. And then, of course, it allows for easier collaboration, um, because the forms are the same and consistent. Then the collaborative, collaborative discussions can be similar, so. And that's that. Any questions?
Um, so, uh, just to clarify, this is gonna be used at H and A middle and high school. Yeah, um, next question, maybe Matt might need to answer this, I'm guessing, but is there. Um, is there something like this, or maybe a variation of this? That is used to evaluate administrators and then. You know, you've got your support staff, what's being done, like as far as evaluation.
This is used for administration as well.
It is, yeah, that's right.
Administration, um, it does have, like we talked about. Right now in your earlier meeting, but counselor, um, and.
Our S L Ps.
S, S L P, uh, portions, and it does extend, we haven't implemented it yet, but it, it does extend to your educational support professionals. Um, and that can be, you know, your fair educator, but also even, um. Depending on how you modify it, and once you play custodians.
We could add that on.
Things of that nature. So it, it really is a versatile tool, all in one spot.
And you're building principles as well?
We're in this. Okay, for administration, yeah.
Yeah, this, I, I, I'm, as a former teacher, full watch, but it seems like it just walks you through and, and you kind of always know where you stand. You know, for most part.
Well, being on the evaluation committee, I think we've been, we've been, just feels like we've just been circling of like. How to do this, and no one's been on the same page, and it's just like, and I think this helps. The teachers feel like, oh, this is what my feedback is, and it was timely, so I think.
And then it causes that, uh, idea of equitable, right? It's equitable for everyone, so the expectation is the same.
And clear, I think, it, to me, it seems clear, like you're.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a little different, and it'll have you some. Some flexibility and discretion within, within the system. Um, for example, like when we're talking about administrators. Building administrator evaluations are fairly similar in format. That, that of your, of your teachers, because of the nature of the job and, and the similarities that. That might look a little different for like a district level director or something, um, and you, and you're able to kind of set that expectation with your directors. What their program is gonna look like, it's still, we're not moving the goalposts on anybody, but adapt it to fit those. And so, and we, we've started that process. Um, this school year with our administrators and our, and our directors al- already along these lines, so. Yes, it's a, it's a great tool. I wasn't joking about drag- dragging us into the twenty first century.
Wonderful. And kind of a continual thing, right? So you say like step one, step two, step three, so you've done step one, then December or something, and then April something. And it's just, yeah, kind of continuing. How's it going? Should we re, rework some of the ideas?
That's why I say it's a true feedback loop, right? Because you have those continual check in.
Yeah.
Lucy goosey, and it's left up to everyone to interpret.
The standard.
What you said or a look you gave versus right here, it's like, this is your info.
And I think it, it, it's a database that you'll have access, so if there's a change in staff. You will be able to go back and look easier than, than pulling out paper or like this interpreting, it's.
It'll hold on to the data.
Yeah, and it's consistent versus.
Versus trying to find paper files.
Yeah.
You're new, and there's none.
I, I, I know, or it's, I feel like, we talked about it, it's like today earlier, but I think our administrators are excited about it.
Oh, yeah.
We're already sitting in, and I hope that the teachers feel the same way, whatever.
I think the teachers are, yeah. They want feedback, is what.
We can all change things too, so it's nice if we like, do it and submit it, and then we're like, oh, and he's like, I need to add this into it or whatever, we can always go back and.
Have you gotten pretty positive feedback?
I have, yeah.
From the staff, I'm just wondering if it's.
Yeah, it's pretty easy to do too. That's the other thing, it's not this like complicated. Other questions? Let me shift to my other one?
Yes. Amended early learning.
Yeah, so we had, um, submitted and had our early learning plan approved, but. We needed to go within makes a few amendments, so I just kind of, I gave you my highlighted version. You can kind of really see the breakdown of, of what it is, but what the early learning plan is, is it's directed for our K three. Did I give you my other one too? Um, it's directed for our K three. Um, and what it is, is it's changed, it's changed frequently. It used to be based around literacy. And now they've switched to numeracy, so the goals are actually, um, more embedded around numeracy, um, building really numeracy. Um, anyways, what it actually helped has us identify, this were a couple of changes we needed to make, is what curriculum we're using is core curriculum. What curriculum we're using as intervention curriculum, um, which we'll see in the. And then, um. For both literacy and math, so we can identify so that we have that guaranteed viable curriculum identified, right? And then, um. Oh, oh, yeah. And then is, if you go to the backside of the first page. Um. Down towards the bottom. You'll start to see kind of for each of these different, um. Curriculums or things, we had, we had to go in and kind of justify what it was that we were doing as our strategies, so. I did update a few of those, but where the biggest change was, is if you go to. The second page at the bottom with the yellow, where it has the sixty percent, we needed to just, um, identify our goals a little bit differently. We wanted to make sure. Um, actually, that's not the right one, sorry. Next page, I actually put goal one, goal two for you. So the first goal, we wanted to make it specific around a grade level and around what we refer to as a sub-test, instead of just a general Akademia's test. So in first grade, we are working directly with what's called ADQ, so advanced quantity, or advanced demonstrate. Oh my gosh, advance. Um. Why can't I think of the word? No, advanced, I think I put the letters backwards, that's why, it's advanced quantity discrimination. So looking at different quantities and discriminating between the two. So what we wanna do in our first grade is decrease the percentage of kids that are below or well below. So basically, we wanna take our reds and yellows and push them up, that's the goal. So that we wanna take nine percent of those kids that are in, in the red or yellow and move them up. And then for goal number two, we got more specific as well, we wanted to tie it to third grade. Um, and we wanted to do it around computation for math, instead of just the composite score. So same kind of theme, we wanna take eleven percent of our kids that are below grade level, below benchmark, and move them up. So that was the amendment to the bullet to the final. From beginning to end of the year, yeah. So. Is this early learning plan something that we have to do every year? Does every district have to do this? Yes. Yeah.
We need a change of sorts.
It does change every year, but yeah, it is a requirement. And like I said, it used to be focused on. And like I said, it used to be focused on literacy, and now they've shifted it to numeracy, so the goals are required to be around that max. Yeah, and it'll always target kindergarten through third grade for early early literacy, early numeracy. So. Any other questions? And it was approved by the the State Board of Community Education, so they approved the amendment, so we're good to go.
And I can't remember, do, is there a report after um like?
Yes, so I will have to report back on the goals, whether or not we attains them, yes.
Is that the same time with me present a new one or?
No, we'll start, yeah, the new one, we'll do it a different time, but the report on the the goals at the end, I think is due by the end of June. End of the, and then we approved everyone.
And then, or again, the sense where HMK is with the clean working.
Yeah, I get that to you in my report, yeah, lessons. So, yeah, and this is just, we have a lot of different goals. We're talking about this since community council day was there, and we have a lot of different goals, lots of different goals. My my goal is to make sure that we streamline. So if we're gonna focus on this, it should match what we're focusing on in other areas.
Yeah.
We'll get there, yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Uh moving on to the Bank of America response to RFP for underwriting services.
Okay, so I catch that lovely document, uh if you have, if you have time to read it, it's it's actually quite. Quite, quite fascinating.
No, I didn't read the confidential notice to recipient, I didn't read that, but I read. No, I read the letter.
Had you hit such a scene?
Sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I just read the letter.
So, um and as as you know, uh last month or the month, I can't remember when Alex was down, Alex and um Brad Johnson were down. Scott Johnson, anyways, we put out an RFP for underwriting services to take out uh to look at refunding our bonds. We um had five different entities respond, we were ecstatic to see that Bank of America was one of them. Um Bank of America is the heavy hitter in the market, undisputedly, I'm super excited they had interest. I think there's probably a variety of reasons there, one of which is that one of the big wigs is a boyfriend role in Utah who looks out for Utah School District. And um was willing to submit a proposal, and they were by far, in a way, the best. Um so I I presented you with that response. Um and then in regular board meeting next week, I'll be asking you to ratify that selection. Um and it's been worked forward to rapidly trying to get um things squared away so that we can be looking at taking those bonds out uh the first couple of weeks of December, try and have them um the process completed before before the holiday break. So um the numbers looked good when I originally pitched the idea to you, they're they're looking better. Um it's very exciting, hoping that we can we can get this done. One of the the major benefits about Bank of America, um if you read that, twelve point eight billion dollars in excess assets. So um there's a real security there in the fact that if, I mean, there's no reason they shouldn't, but if our bonds weren't to sell, they would they would carry them. And have done that for Utah School Districts in the past, so um really exciting opportunity, so uh.
So what is their role as their their?
Their their our underwriter.
They underwriter.
Our bonds to the market.
They take the bonds to the market.
Right, so, because we're not taking, because we could take them ourselves, but we're guaranteed better pricing. Going through an underwriter with just our level, has that happened before, do you know, historically?
If I, I don't know, I I do think.
Alex done that before, or have we gotten?
Uh like, have we had?
I would have to go back and look at the original bonds, but my memory tell, I top my head, yes, I think we had a negotiated underwriter last year, last time that we did that. That's why we were able to establish the call in the timeframe, that we were able to establish the calls, because we set that. So it's a trade off when you go with a negotiated underwriter or compared to just taking it to the free market in your in your chances. With the circumstances surrounding this, um the timeframe and and just everything put together, the determination was made to go with the negotiated underwriter as opposed to just going to the market.
Are the benefits offsetting the cost of the underwriter, or is it just timing?
I think I think it, it's a risk reward, so, because you don't really know how to calculate that other end. Um but in my opinion, there was not a big enough gain to risk not having action. The risk, what the reward wasn't there for for the risk of.
Then the re- reward would be a lower interest rate.
Lower, a possibly. And it might not be.
Yeah.
And so that's where that's where you're taking that risk. But like I said, the security that comes with Bank of America taking this out for us is truly just good news for our district. Zion's is Zion's is still um.
They're the facilitator.
They're not, yeah, he's not the underwriter.
Yeah.
Science corporate.
Science doesn't do any of that.
They don't do the underwriting. So, read that. Okay, we'll uh we'll have a pop quiz on Wednesday.
Uh could you give us a um timeline of what's going on, draw or a verbal assignment? Like or for this process?
So um we are hoping to schedule with a bond rating. Um I think I believe it's gonna be Moody's, it might be S and P, but either the last week of this month or the first week of November. So we would go out there and get a bond rating and then um put the package, put the package together. Have all the um I's dotted and T's crossed, uh just double double checking everything. And going out, taking the bids to market around December fourteenth, between my memories.
Or hopefully before Thanksgiving, but in circumstances with Alex and stuff, it's probably gonna be worst part of December.
No later than December fourteen.
Yeah.
If we can get it done before Thanksgiving.
That was the, that was the original goal, but.
So do we have to um? Do I mean, do we need to have a meeting at a certain time to uh sort of like like vote on any of this?
Vote on going forward to to put the bonds out, yes.
With, yes, and which would be after the bond rate, like?
After the, after the bond rating, so that that meeting, that meeting in November, what's our, what's our board meeting in November? Nineteen.
Nineteen, the core meeting, nineteen.
Yes.
So depending on how the timing goes, um we could look at if things are prepared, changing the twelve to a regular meeting.
Or just, yeah.
Or adding a regular.
Or I'm taking, we could change.
So that's our timeframe.
Um and then what about the December fourteenth, is that after after, is that a board meeting as well? After that?
No, once, once we've, once, once, once the board's moved forward, but taking him to to the market.
We don't have to vote in, we don't have to vote for anything. And then I did get a question from um a community member that there's in the paper where they read something about the bond.
Zion's had to put a public notice in there, because they were going out for RFPs for those five. For for, yeah, and we chose Bank of America.
Okay, I think they, I I was getting feedback, they were act, they were worried we were going out to get a.
No, it was, it's not that I. In the paper, but but they had to, they had to publicly notice that, because we're a public entity, that they're getting RFPs for basically the underwriters.
So just if you might get that as well, that it's not that people read this public notice at this.
My husband, he asked you the same question, so I know.
I'll try by the obispo, is that what you all play? Just in case.
Just in case, you might be in there. Any other questions about this? Do we get, you're on board with the bond rating?
Request for proposal.
That's it? Any executive session? Is there a second?
A second.
Dave Ershide makes a motion to adjourn, Kathy Wim seconds. Uh we adjourned.
That is a record.
Starting new traditions, Lorelai. Starting new traditions.
Move people around, short means.